Yeah. Now, we got nine new custody since over the weekend, people got arrested.
In favor.
Yeah, right? I think that's what happens. That's what happens when you get nicer weather. Good news is when it's like 15 degrees out, no one's so outside.
Oh, Brian.
So, perjury payment, I know that Colin at the last update had talked a little bit about that. I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have regarding that. The proposal is to do that out over an anticipated career. But I need that to the board.
Were we looking for agreement from Judge Samuelson in the way you said?
Yes, I mean, we would like to reach an agreement as to what that repayment's going to look like. And so, his opening offer was he'll pay it back over his anticipated career, which I believe he said was 17 years, I believe was the number. There is a provision in the law that if you're going to, if there's overpaid wages, you can get that repaid at no more than 5% of the wages, however this isn't a wage, this is retirement.
Yeah.
That was not deducted. So, whatever the board wants me to take back, I will take back. His over, I guess, offer was to pay it back over 17 years. I believe that the state has already, Eric, is that correct? Eric, I'm calling Eric.
Yes, I would have to confirm that with Suzette, but I recall that I had a meeting with the board in which they authorized us to make the payment including half of the interest because that's what the state was willing to waive. And I communicated that with Suzette and some folks who were in the meeting in person. So, I suspect that it's in pay, but I didn't get confirmation of that. But that's a separate issue. Judge Samuelson, of course, we have to make an agreement with this to have to pay us back even though it was our obligation against state bank.
Right. Okay. Oh, and then looking back to staffing, there is one other thing. We received notice that the OCVA funding, which is the crime victim funding, is actually decreasing by $3,000 from 65 to $62,000. The state is cutting their funding by 30. But that's a statewide thing, so it's not, they're not picking on Louis County.
They're not picking on us?
No. We may feel it more than some, but they're not picking on us. There are many counties who fear that they will end up losing employment.
And Wapa is picking up some of those, paying for victim witness training.
Yeah. Yeah, Janelle just said Wapa is picking up some of the slack there and helping pay for some of the victim witness training that has to occur. So, the only request that I would have is that I be granted permission to bring a person interview up above the standard A. I mean, it'll still be in the same, I never can remember. Is that a step or a range?
It's a range with a step.
Range, at a higher step. But within the range. Yes. Yes. So, that would be my request. I would take those two things down. Thank you. Will you pass out some paper?
I don't know if you just have to. This paper is very important.
Sure.
Did Rita copy this one?
Interesting.
State law requires Louis County by law to supply an indemnity in defense whenever an elected officer of the county or employee of the county is sued for a civil action, which arises in accordance with the employees' or the officers' duties. This is an obligation under state law. It's not something the county may or may not do, the county shall do it. The county is obliged to create a mechanism for doing so. That is, a mechanism whereby the affected employee or elected official can request indemnity. The county can evaluate whether the indemnity is inappropriate and then if we're at, we're denying. We currently operate in Louis County under a 2003 resolution which sets up a mechanism I think it approved upon. Since our resolution was drafted in 2003, the Court of Appeals has come to pass on question once, only one case, in context of the matter which arose in Yakima County. They offered some guidance, and they also looked favorably upon certain language coming from the Yakima County Code. What I've done is to provide you with an expanded resolution, which I believe modernizes and improves upon our 2003 set of procedures. And also, I've tried to avoid the legalese in the explanatory memorandum. Can't really afford to draft a resolution that has to be somewhat heavy on legalese. I took the memorandum in plain English. It explains why it's being proposed to you and why it's being proposed to you. I see that this appears to be the first time you've seen this. I know Eric Barton is seated earlier. Rather than asking you to speak, read, and perhaps they've hurried the determination, I wonder if you might care if tabled this to the next prosecutor's update and looking at the provisions that commissioners may have questions about. Thank you. On a separation, and I think this is something which you might not consider today, but of course, if you hold it over, you think that's appropriate as well, it's always up to you for determination. As commissioners of Delaware, advice which you get from your attorney leaving the county, advice which the county, the Louis elected officials and Louis managers get and receive from your attorneys, and requests which you make, formative advice, are subject to attorney client privilege. You cannot be compelled to disclose any advice given to you to an adversary. It would be rather unfair and prejudiced, the county's ability to defend claims against them. Unfortunately, from time to time, privileged documents sometimes get out where they shouldn't. Mistakes are made by public records officers, sometimes something which is privileged isn't recognized as such. The law allows these documents to be clawed back. That is, it allows the county to regain a document which inadvertently was released despite being privileged. In order to claw back a document, it's very helpful if we can show that the release truly was inadvertent and that it was done by somebody who doesn't have authority to waive the privilege. At this point, as your ordinances and resolutions now stand, it's an open question as to who may waive the privilege on behalf of the county. What we'd recommend to you is that this open question be resolved by yourselves and that you provide that only the government body by resolution may waive privilege in a document. We believe that this would strengthen our hand, would allow attorney client privilege to be retained more regularly, and we encourage you to enact a resolution in these terms.
This is a inadvertent disclosure of something that was truly privileged.
Yes, this is what the resolution is primarily aimed at. It also just makes it clear to people who work for you, to your department heads, that the privilege belongs to the county. It doesn't belong to the public records department, it doesn't belong to the health department, et cetera. If anything which belongs to the county is like a county asset. Title 36 of the revised code says the government body has charge of the county's assets. We feel that it's appropriate for a decision to, in essence, give up an asset, never to be made lightly, and always require action by the government body.
So, this is just basically strengthening the privilege?
Yes, sir. Well, I don't know that it strengthens the privilege and makes it more clear as to who can waive that privilege. So, for instance, I mean, even though, I'm probably a bad example since I'm an attorney, but let's use the auditor's office. The auditor has documents, and we may have attorney-client privilege with some of those documents that we write, if we write an opinion for them or something along those lines. It's still your record because it affects the whole county, not just the auditor's office. So, there may become a time where that's your privilege to waive, not necessarily his privilege to waive.
Also, when the county is sued, as you well know, the money damage to be paid comes out of your purse, not the purse of the elected official or his office, was implicated in the cause of action. This is further reason why we feel it's appropriate that a decision to waive an attorney-client privilege always reside in government body.
Were you looking for a decision to make?
If you feel it appropriate, if you drive, discuss it further or put it off, of course, that's always your prerogative.
So, we'd be putting it on our agenda like tomorrow for our V O C C, maybe Monday?
If you feel that that's appropriate, certainly. Rita pointed out to me that there's a typographic error in the caption, "client" that has the AI in it. I saw you have a page special, if I could point it out to you.
County.
Oh, really? What's my type of tab?
It's Elsie.
Cleant copy.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So, we, does it make a decision on this today?
On our agenda, move it to our agenda tomorrow.
Go through the discussion.
Or bring it on the agenda for Monday.
Do we have to include anything here? Do that, it's only a play.
Do it tomorrow morning. Do you just have to direct it to be put on the agenda? Yeah.
Perhaps, since we are on Tuesday, perhaps we'll do this all in a week.
We can say we're gonna do this, right? Like we've done before and say we'll add it on on Monday.
Could this be a late, yeah, this could be an add-on.
This could be a lay-in, but, or you could just hold off and do the normal steps, which would be, it would be part of, it's Wednesday, directors update for the following Monday.
I don't see any reason to delay.
Do we need a motion? You don't need a motion?
No, you just need to direct it, that it you put on.
Let's put, we can put this on tomorrow's meeting, but it won't be added on until Monday, is that right? Because you can.
Correct. So, you would be, on Monday morning, you would be saying, yes, we want it on the agenda, let's start normal procedure.
All right, let's do that. Okay. Final matter, if I may, commissioners. At present, we have a Title II or Section II, whatever it is of the Louis County Code, is entitled Indemnization. And correctly compared to other counties of similar size and population, it's not very much there. At the same time, we have quite a number of resolutions which are of general concern to staff throughout the county, and more importantly, to the public in large, which relate to the running of county government. Not items that are one-off, but recurring-type items. An example that was before you today is the Resolution on Indemnity in Defense. I understand that at some point in the not-too-distant future, there'll be actually taken by the government body to eliminate the authority of the county manager vis-à-vis Board of County Commissioners. These are matters of general interest, general application. Most counties choose to put this in their county code. What I'd like to propose to the commissioners is that the prosecutor's office, namely me, work with county staff, including Rita, who has tremendous institutional memory of our resolutions, and others such as the auditor's office, to identify matters of general public concern and propose their connotation in Title II to the Board of County Commissioners. So, I'll take that project.
I don't think Eric had said that. First, he thought we couldn't do that, but then he found out we could.
You're Eric or our Eric?
Our Eric. That's right. Eric. Okay, Eric, okay.
Those are my matters, if I may.
May I just point out that his name is E Rock, that you're Eric, at the accent, some of the second syllable.
Okay. Does he agree with that?
I don't know.
Which is idea.
Oh!
So, let's move down to our two and I. Let's move on to the session after that. So, one fraction.
I don't know either, actually.
What was it? I'm sorry?
Civil infractions.
This was brought up some kind of, I'm not sure.
Is it supposed to?
I'm going off the top.
So, this is something, yes.
Yeah, I think what we were specifically talking about, of having the ability when there's a, when there's an infraction, all we do is we can write 100 infractions.
Oh, that's right. Isn't it?
And having the ability, similar to the dog ordinance where we modified that, is there any way to put something with more teeth in it as far as when those civil infractions occur? So, there is something at the end of the rainbow rather than just.
Are we talking about like a specific type of infraction or just in general?
I'm talking about maybe code violations, like code violations.
So, if I remember right, just historically, we've talked about this, and we've talked about specific cases where there are many failure to appears for civil infractions, and those have been committed, and we're wondering what other recourse, what other remedy we could take in implementing our code on that issue. And that is something we're working on. I had a conversation with Bill Titel about this yesterday morning as well regarding a specific case. So, we are working, I'm actually looking at some creative remedies that we could implement short of some other ones that would cause, you know, results that we wouldn't want to have.
Okay.
That's a lot of chance.
Thank you.
So, would you like that carry over to the next one, just so we can give an update?
Sure.
Okay. Send your center over to another papers. I'm reading this letter. Did you guys compose this letter?
Contract?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Eric, eyes and heart. I'm gonna sign up.
Eric?
Yeah, so, I have a, Becky alerted me that the board would be looking for an actual contract that they might have in hand, that they could propose to the folks in the Toledo Senior Center, to basically carry out what we had talked about, Becky, Eric Barton and I had talked about as a potential way the board should suggest. Obviously, it's your call, not ours, but this is what we propose to suggest to you. I think you have properly heard this idea before.
I think we saw it earlier in the week, two of us saw it earlier, and we gave our comments back to Becky.
And I just had it, and I passed it on to Bobby, so.
Oh, okay.
This is basically everything we talked about.
Yeah, I mean, the proposal is to have due building improvements on the Toledo Senior Center building. We own the building, so that really gets rid of any concern about if the public funds, if the factors without a real contract, because we're using our own building. And, but it also provides the mechanism to put money back into Toledo Senior Center that was earmarked for it, if you will. And so, it benefits the people to use that center, and that hopefully would be what they really want. One thing that I had brought up as a concern that hopefully you guys will be able to resolve without me is I wasn't entirely sure who we're dealing with on the other side. Like, do they, I don't know if we're dealing with the advisory panel for that, or if there's some other representative of Toledo Senior Center. The draft of the contract I proposed is basically blanket refers to them as the Toledo Senior Center, and I thought that might not be accurate, but I didn't have enough information to sue it more accurately. So, I hope that that's an issue that you are aware of.
Well, my question would be, wouldn't this actually be for the entire Louis County Senior Board, since they fall under that final one, simply?
Not according to them. At the meeting we had with the senior board, they proposed that they did not think that the Louis County Senior Board was an overarching organization that was the person who we should be dealing with on this issue, because in their opinion, each of the separate senior centers dealt individually with the county in the period that this is referring to. Now, yeah, now the Senior Center Board is a kind of managerial organization that unites them all, but that's not who, in the sort of messy fact of this circumstance, like, that's not who they think really had any deal with the county, if there was any deal that he had.
I heard that it was Fred Wilson, who's the president of that nonprofit for the Toledo Senior Center, was the person that needed to have this discussion with us, as well as Monterey. And they're, they have their own money, that 501(c)(3). So, they're a little bit more organized than some of the other senior centers.
I don't dispute that. It seemed like we're getting in the weeds with this a little bit because I just wonder what, if it's gonna create an issue with us having a specific agreement with one of these senior centers when they all fall under the same heading? I don't know, just seem a lot.
It is, and I remember Ron Avro saying, this happened, you know, it was between the county and the senior center and the health department, et cetera, and that they really didn't want to be a part of this.
That's what, that's the reason I said that, that Ron said that specifically at that meeting, I was present at where I, I don't know what to do, and then left.
Well, here's the other side of this, and that is that while this is the only senior center that has come to us and said that they believe that they won't pay us, what's to prevent other senior centers from coming directly to us instead of going to their board to register complaints about different things? It seems like to me this all ought to come in the same heading.
Well, I think the reason that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, but I think part of the reason I came to us this way independently of the board is the timeframe which it occurred was before the board was in existence.
Okay, I get that.
No, it was in existence, it just was not, it had no like managerial control of the various centers. It was sort of a meeting, like a clearinghouse right there.
I'm just a little concerned that each one of those centers will be coming to us for a variety of reasons. You know, outside of talking with the people that are actually in charge of the whole thing. That's my concern, not that it would or would not happen per se, but it could happen. I'm just saying we're opening up, we're opening ourselves up for something here, I feel like.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
That's a wonderful point. So, I agree with you. I think that's a good point. When I wrote the version of the document that you've seen, I was concerned that the more detail I put into it, the more that it like, we would be at risk when other centers come a-calling and saying, even though you have a contract with Leo that says you don't have a deal with them, like, the facts that you're talking about there is just, you did have a deal with them, and now we would like ours too, please. You had a deal with us in this regard. So, I don't really love, I don't love the fact that we are in some way setting ourselves up for that. The, we, I, I mean, we could try and make all of them come to the table and make all of them signatories to an agreement that they've all agreed with about how to settle it with everybody in their different circumstances. In other words, this agreement could, instead of being a three-staying agreement, you could make this just one piece of a bigger agreement with all of the centers, whether through their governing organization now or through them all individually, in which basically you're like, okay, we're gonna do building improvements at Toledo, we're going to not take stuff from Horton because we didn't really have a contract, you see what I mean? We could do something like that.
Yeah, and my point, and part of that is that I don't think now that the senior board is in place and they're basically running this business, that they can necessarily, they can choose what they're going to be involved in as opposed to what they're not going to be involved in. Because it's gonna set up, it could turn into a disaster, you know, if we suddenly have senior centers that are bypassing the board that has been set in place to take care of this, and they're coming directly to us for relief on whatever the issue might be. I just see this as creating some real issues for us. And I'm not real comfortable with this thing on the face of it right now.
Is there something that can be written in that contract or that agreement to say that specifically? This is a situation that occurred, and, I mean, I'm not sure what that would look like, but I'm with Bobby because I don't want Winlock coming to us, and I don't want Packwood coming to us and saying, oh, by the way, in, you know, 19, 2005, I mean, and again, what we had, what we received from Toledo was basically their budget sheet and indicating we didn't have any, we had no, you know, we didn't have any records to prove that or not, you know, prove it or disprove it.
But, you know, I believe, and Eric, I've more acknowledged that, I believe that that number is backed up by what records you maintain by the county, but perhaps a bigger conversation is in order, and Eric can set up a meeting with the board, the senior board, and kind of link them in on the discussion.
I think that would be more appropriate.
Do you have a meeting with the Toledo Senior Center directly after this meeting?
We do.
We do.
Okay, and so, you're prepared to tell them basically that you're not ready to deal with them individually?
I feel like this is a one-time circumstance, and that we have to be very clear that this is it from now on, any other circumstances occur, that we will deal with them one at a time, and it has to go to their board if there's something that the whole senior center board wants to talk to us. Individually now, we don't have this situation with anybody else. This is a one-time circumstance, and we did have our staff look at the data that they had, and Danette spent a lot of time working with that information and came and brought that data to us. But I think concerns that here's the plan to commissioners having, that having a conversation with Ron Avro and everybody else and saying, you know, this is your baby from now on, you are, you have that, you are the 501(c)(3) handling senior center business, but this is an anomaly.
Well, and I don't disagree with you completely, and I disagree with you on some points that this isn't an anomaly, but the minute we decide that that's what this is and we go forward with it just on the face of this, I still think we're leaving ourselves open for some issues now. We can be real specific about what we need to do.
So, what language would you like to put in there?
The language has to be, it's not just, there's no language. What I'm saying is that this decision needs to be made by the senior board as a whole because they don't get to pick and choose, they can, you know, they can say, well, that was in place before we got here. Okay, I don't disagree with that, but now that you're part, now that everybody is under this one particular heading, they need to step up and make determinations about this, saying, yes, this is in place, we'd like to work on this for us. The other senior centers, they don't have these issues, in fact, most of them are behind you, what they told us in the beginning of it. But I'm very leery of us just saying, this is an anomaly, and we can just go with this, and that'll be fine. I don't think it'll be fine. I think somewhere down the line, this thing jumps up and bites us in the rear end.
Hi, this is Eric, I'm only on this phone, of course, this is Eric. Perhaps what we could do is that we could negotiate contracts with the larger boards in which they agree that they are in control of this situation, that they assume responsibility and assume authority to make decisions on behalf of all the boards on this and all other issues, in exchange for the resolution of this one and its payments in kind, if you will, to Toledo. In other words, like, so the board's position was this really predated us having real control of those organizations, this was really individual with the different senior centers, you should take it up with each of them, that was their position, we could make them compromise that position as part of the deal, that they could say, in consideration for the fact that one of the senior centers is getting these benefits, they have to be part of the deal, say that they're in charge of these types of deals now and forevermore, and that they, and that like, they're waiving any other claims that might have had other benefit, or something like that.
I just think we need one single point of contact with this, one board that we deal with on this. It's not, I'm not saying that we don't do this, I think we ultimately will do this, but I just see some real issues with us striking an agreement with one senior center when they are under another, they're under their own board. And I think that board needs to step up, and we need to have a conversation with them. That's my position on this. And anomalies, it may be anomalies, but, you know, we work in a world that anomalies can turn around, and they can, they can be detrimental.
They can be, and the other part of this is if we say Louis County seniors, you're have to be involved in this, when they're saying, hands off, that's another piece of this.
They can't say hands off. That's my, they can't do it.
I don't know that they can't say that, because it was really a dealing between us and each individual center back then. They were reported separately.
But, I mean, to Commissioner Jackson's point, we also don't know what agreement each center made to become part of the board. And if then, you know, basically, you are going to be the clearinghouse for everything. going to be the clearinghouse for everything from here into eternity, including anything that may be in existence at this time. So I think maybe...
You mean, you're looking at their, their agreement, each, each, what they all signed off on?
Well, the agreement, I mean, in all honesty, the agreement to enter into that board may have stripped them of the ability to act as an individual senior center, so I think that maybe, to Commissioner Jackson's point, I think maybe a, a larger conversation, um, with the senior board, if you will.
And I know, that would clear up some things, I know, like, there's a lot of fundraising going on, and each center's doing their own money, and then they pay, like, seventeen hundred dollars a month to...
To the board?
To the board.
Okay.
But the rest they keep, that they, and they manage...
That's fine, but that's their agreement.
They manage their own centers, they have their special...
But that's their own agreement, Ed, that's not an agreement they made with us, that's the agreement they made with that board.
That's what they did.
Therefore, therefore, they need to go back to the board to have this discussion.
And I would say, that's a good discussion to have, I don't believe that was not our agreement between...
Oh, sure, it was, but we need to convince them that that's the right thing to do. At any rate, what I think, and Gary, you speak up, because this is your district.
Processing all this. First, this is the outer, outer, from that point on. Then, to, I think, all of our points, then the senior board, if there's a problem with the building, or whatever, whatever that falls under, then they're gonna go to that board and say, hey, we've got a problem with Packwood, or whatever, you know, and twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, it still wasn't working, and, you know, we want to make Packwood pay for it, or whatever. So I'm, I guess I've, I don't know what it looks like, but we need to clear this one up, and if that means going back to the board and talking to them specifically about it, to get them to say, hey, this is where we're at with this, um, do we need the blessings from the board? I don't know if we do, I don't know if we don't. But to me, this is, this, this is a standalone thing for all the, you know, hereafter, so to speak. And I don't, I don't want to get into this anymore, when, you know, when a group comes and says, uh, Winlock, or Morton, or whatever comes and says, well, you know, we put some money in, and they didn't, you know, it's accounted for, and we've got, we've got proof to show. I want to make sure that that is cleared up, because I don't want that to come back once.
Right.
Now, if it's, and I don't know how we do this, but this is a separate thing, you know, in comparison to what we, what we're dealing with.
And it would be who? I would think it would be who, Toledo, to talk, to want us to talk to the board as well, because Commissioner Fun pointed out, and I don't know if I have the numbers right, but of the fundraising efforts that they do each month, the first seventeen hundred go to the, to the overarching board. Well, if I'm the overarching board, and I see all of a sudden Toledo Senior Center gets an influx of X amount of dollars, I'm gonna say, well, where's my seventeen hundred? From that fund? So, but, I don't know, it's, it's up to you, uh, both this board, how you want us to proceed, or if you want us to proceed.
So what I know now, Eric, that Toledo is right on the money, I mean, they're paying their bills, they're not, there's no question that they're giving their money to...
Yeah, it's certainly the most active, seems to be the most active, yes.
So do we need to have, do we need to talk to the board from on in, and have a, just a discuss, overall discussion, and problem solve this thing, or say this is our position, or...
Well, our Eric's been working on this the most, I'll defer to him, but that seems like the mix-up to me, anyway. Eric?
Yeah, so the, I mean, what can I say? The reason I prepared that contract for today was because that's what I was asked to do. I did have misgivings about the fact that it, it potentially opened us up to claims from the other centers. It is not the case, so, from the documentation I've seen, which is the most recent documentation, I think it's, uh, maybe a couple of years' worth, it was certainly, seems to be the case that, uh, Toledo accurately reported that, 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 like, their numbers and our numbers suggested we owe them about nineteen grand, if they were, if the arrangement was subsidy agrees, an obligation to pay them, which I'm not sure it could. Other centers, uh, at most, like, a couple of them owed us, like, a good deal of money, um, and a couple of them that were close to even, but not exactly even, like, a, a, you know, fifteen hundred dollars there, or something like that. So it is possible that other centers would come asking us for, uh, the amount that they're, they're quote-unquote owed, in a safe way, Toledo is. It's also possible, as Commissioner Jackson swiped out, that they could argue that an even older claim of some kind, like, where they had some deal with us, meant that we owe them money, um, so I guess the, like, that, my advice would be, don't make a deal with Toledo right after this meeting, because we're not ready to make that deal, because we're still looking at it. I would say you could tell them honestly that you're working on it, that you've even had some stuff drafted up, you're just not sure that it's right yet, and that you, in my opinion, the best method would be to have an agreement that has all, it would be, be an agreement with all of the senior centers and the overarching board, that not only settles the whole mess, but also provides a rule going forward about how, like, we interact with them. And, and, you know, like, perhaps we should be interacting with, with, uh, the, the top organization, and then they, they could all agree to that, you know what I mean?
I just think that's clever, Eric, honest to goodness, I do. I, I, I have no problem with what we have here on paper for the, for the Toledo seniors, but I think that since there's, that board is in place, they need to understand, that they need to approach that board first, and let the board make the initial steps, from there, to come to talk to it. I think you're gonna have nothing but chaos if we do it the way that I see it right now.
So at this point, the only senior center that comes to us for anything is Toledo. Have we, have any other that we, or, I remember they asked me something about the 501(c)(3), so I can't answer that, you need to talk to your board.
The only, the only other thing I believe that we had conversation about is, uh, the light situation over in Morton, but I think we'll, I think we're gonna get that cleared up, that's a separate issue, and...
Separate.
Yeah, so that would be the only, I have not heard of anything, and...
Well, we've got to move on, so, I am, we're gonna meet with them, and that's my recommendation, because we pulled off... Okay, Vader District Court. We have met with the judges on this one, and my understanding was the interloper agreement had to come through commissioners?
Right, because it's a creation of, um, so in speaking with, this has been ongoing for far too long, uh, but Lewis County Sheriff's Office provides law enforcement services for Vader, who currently has a contract with Winlock to provide court services. The problem is, that creates hardship on everybody, in that if we have an inmate in custody, we now have to transport them down to Vader, so we're gonna have overtime details, you have the security issues that go with that. So part of the contract with the sheriff's office is that they're just gonna cite directly to District Court, which is good for everybody. Our offices agree to take on those cases, because it won't be, be a book on our radar. I think the last year that Vader had stats were twenty-two cases, I think, or somewhere in there.
That was a high watermark, about twenty-two or twenty-four cases, for, I think it was twenty, year twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the twenty seventeen numbers were seven cases. They were averaging roughly, over the last five years, about seven or eight cases a year, and also some, or even infractions a year.
Right, so that's something that wouldn't be a book on our radar, as far as prosecution goes, so we told Vader, you know, you're, we'll just roll ourselves into the sheriff's contract as well. I talked to Judge Buzzard, he said, yeah, that's fine, uh, we're happy to do that, however, by law, the city asks to have a court. And so, yeah, we just have to come up with some type of contract that says Vader is wanting to use this court, and it's not unusual, Morton, Mossy Rock, Searl, Toledo, council that want to use the District Court now, so just a matter of finding terms, if there are any, um, you know, it could be a little less than a dollar a year, middle centers, some kind of extreme.
Yakima County has a number of precedents with its small cities.
A number contract?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something to model it from.
Well, we have several with ours as well.
And Vader has indicated that their council has, that they were going to draft something proposal to present, um, to our office, to channel through, or as well, too, so we're in the process of working out some terms of the options.
So then why don't we carry this over to the next meeting as well, just to get everybody updated?
Okay. Call of power?
It sounds like our office has made some calls for, uh, seeking a consult with people that have people, I don't know if we're pretty back there, except everyone.
Just for one person who's not in private practice anywhere, so, we'll go back and see what we can help.
So carry that one over as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, at this point, we will go into executive session.
Before we do that, uh, can we go back to my request for the, for the staffing, the step in range issue? I need you to be able to extend it off.
I have thumbs up.
Yeah.
Will you have? Um, we interviewed for a paralegal position that has more than common experience with me, so I'm asking you to be able to go up on the staff, same range, just go up in the station.
Have you had a chance to talk to Becky yet?
No. I have not. I will talk.
Okay. Okay. Now, we will go into executive session on RCW forty-two point thirty.